I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I always turn around, Lori, there's someone who put their knee. Honey, could you give us a roll call?
Hi, Ian.
Here.
Phil. There he is, Phil. He's on there. Andy. Ellie.
Here.
Lauren. I don't know if that's his number.
Tony, we can hear you, but the camera isn't on.
What? Why did it do that? There.
Got it, thanks.
Lauren. None of those are him. Davey.
Yes.
Starting, I hear. Only one's gone.
We have a quorum.
Okay, we have a quorum. And we'll move on now to the agenda. We need a motion to approve the... Well, first, I need to present some amendments to the agenda. Under Presentations, we'll have Karen Genkowsky giving the Oregon Trail Rally. Leslie Ebert will give us a presentation on KVH. EMS is here, represented by Tony Gilmore. And Greater Goldendale Chamber of Commerce, Nicole Levine, is on hand with two or three other people for their presentation. Let's see, I think.
I'm down at the bottom. Executive session.
Oh, and there will be an executive session tonight on both property lease rates and union negotiations with the police department. So that's the additions to the amendment, to the agenda. And if we can have a motion to approve it as amended or if there are further things that people want to add.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Agenda for Denied Speeding as amended and the Consent Agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, by the same sign. Motion passes. We'll begin now... Larry, do we have the Oregon Trail Rally for a presentation on Zoom?
I believe so.
Okay.
Karen, are you on there?
I am. Thank you for having me, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead with your presentation, please, Karen.
Okay, sounds good. Sorry, I don't have the video part. I'm just on the phone, but...
That's okay.
Oregon Trail... That's okay. Oregon Trail Rally is a car race. We are celebrating our 25th year. We have been in your area all 25 years. And I am the new chair of the event. I've been a longtime competitor and a longtime member of this organizing team of our event. And I thought it would be great to have the start on Saturday morning in beautiful downtown Goldendale. And so that's why I wanted to talk with you all about doing so. And that would be basically similar to, I think, you do another car show at the 100 West Main to 200 West Main. And I was down there a couple of weeks ago and looked at the area. And we will have about 75 race cars parked. So it's a really nice way for, you know, people in Goldendale and also fans to look at the cars before they go out and race. We will have a ceremonial start. I'm envisioning they'll turn right onto Columbus where your really cool arches that says Goldendale. So the pictures and stuff will show that. So I thought it was a little extra love for Goldendale. People will see that. We have competitors that are not only local, but we also have some pretty big names like Travis Pastrana and Ken Block and Brandon Semenek. And we have people from around the world as well. So it should be a really great way to, you know, have more people know about Goldendale. Also shop at the businesses and eat at the restaurants and stay at the hotel, which I believe the quality end is getting pretty full. And so that is my proposal. It would start the, we'll call it, we call it Car Expose, but what you call Car Show on that 100 to 200 block on that Saturday, November 6. It would go from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. And then the competitors will leave from there and go to the area where we're racing. And then Goldendale High School is the location for service. That's where the cars go in between racing to, you know, fix their cars, have lunch, and then they go back. So basically, all day on Saturday, November 6, you're going to have all of these teams in town.
Yay.
And you'll have to excuse me, I haven't made this kind of presentation before. So if you have any questions at all, please fire away.
Any questions for Karen? Or any comments?
So it says here that you're going to close the streets from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m.?
Correct. But it's really 10:30. And just that one, just those two blocks, that's it?
Well, it is on a Saturday morning. So the likelihood of some of the inconvenience by that is probably not...
Yeah.
It's all the racers, apparently. So it's going to be like, so all those race cars that were at Pete's when Pastrana was here last time?
Yeah.
There's going to be all those cars on display. And then as they leave for their first run out to Dallas Mountain Road...
Lily, could you come up here?
Picture op. Yeah, I've been tiling all day, sorry. They'll do a picture op kind of thing with them leaving. And then you can go look at the cars and that kind of thing beforehand. So it's kind of a really cool thing this year. And you have those big names like Ken Block and Travis Pastrana. And the other one is, what is his name, Karen? Darren?
Oh, Brandon, Brandon Semenek.
He's a...
He's a famous X Games competitor.
Yeah. So it'll be really great for all of you guys down town.
It's pretty early, I mean, no one's even open early.
Yeah, and that's November 6. So that's coming up, right? That's November 6, Karen?
Yes, November 6.
Yes, correct.
So it's a quick...
Saturday, November 6. And then if people don't make it to that, then that's okay. We're still at the high school. So people also have a second opportunity to go see the cars in between racing.
And Karen, they're coming in between the races more than they normally would. So it gives an opt for you to go and visit with the racers now, even more so than ever before. Is that, that's correct?
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, when you go to a track like it's Portland International Raceway, you don't really get a chance to meet the racers or get real close to a car. And we do the same thing in Dooford. So on Sunday, we close more of the downtown of Dooford, even smaller town. And we do the same thing as well. And it's just a, it's just a nice way for you to meet the racers, see the cars, the kids love it, to be able to get, you know, close to an actual race car and get their pictures taken. And then I'm trying to partner with the high school as far as doing the food drive and ask fans to bring a can of food. So hopefully that will, you know, help fill up your food banks before the holidays. You might as well take advantage of the fact this is in November. So that's something else that I'm working on and hoping that we will be able to do as well.
Any other comments or questions?
I'd like to say something.
Yes.
Karen? Can she hear me? My name's Kathy. I'm with the Chamber. You said that the hotels are filling up. And you mentioned just one of them. And I wanted to let your people know that we have another one called Ponderosa Motel. And we also have Stargazer's RV Park. That's new since you've been here before, across from the high school. So just so you know.
Yeah, you know, the, I wasn't aware of the RV park. It's a rental. I thought it was a long-term one. So if somebody is coming into town that wants to bring their RV, can they actually park there for one night? Or is that just long-term parking?
No, it's...
It's new and it's for tourism. Yeah, it's for short term.
And it's next door to the Quality End, same property.
I'll put that on our social media then. That would be great.
Okay.
And Kathy, I left you a message, by the way, too. So sorry for the phone tag.
Kathy?
At the Chamber of Commerce?
Oh, yeah, okay. I'll call you back. Good, because I'm... And this is Nicole, Kathy, from the Chamber as well. And definitely, I mean, we have a, we made a film in, I think it was 2017. And I'm wondering, are you going to, are you going to go up the loops?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we will be able to get the schedule well ahead, I hope?
Yes, absolutely.
All right.
You want me to, well, Nicole, if I get your email address, I can send that to you anytime.
Great. Di, you've got Karen's phone number, right? Okay. Di's our president of our board, so she'll get me that contact information for you, and I'll give you a call.
Perfect, that'd be wonderful. Yeah, whatever we can do over the next three and a half weeks to coordinate, all the better. Because the nicest thing with this kind of racing is you don't just have 75 teams. You've got, you know, their friends and family or crew. So you have a lot of people that are not only coming to the city, but there's a lot of local teams and volunteers. And what we've found with our racing is that it puts these cities like yours on the map. So somebody comes and volunteers on Saturday. They've never heard of Goldendale until then. Now they have. And now it becomes a place that they want to come back to, you know? So we've already started some social media posts like we normally do, promoting the cities that like Goldendale and Dooford. And we'll continue to do so. And we like to do that to try to help bring more people to your city.
Karen, we really appreciate you've added an incredible number of very helpful changes to the schedule so that the public will have a lot more chances to know about this rally and the people involved. I think it's an excellent thing that you've done. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Now, you know, I've still got a lot of work to do. My goal is to try to reach out to many businesses. And obviously partnering with the Chamber will help me to do that as well, you know, letting the businesses know. When we had the event in Maine, I tried to call as many restaurants as I could to give them a heads up because, you know, I never want to come to a city where they don't know that we're coming, if that makes sense. So I want to make sure that everyone knows. So if they have an opportunity to stay open later to get that extra business or bring in that extra, you know, cook, you know, things like that, that, you know, especially in November, when it's a little bit slower anyway, you know, every little bit helps, I think, I hope.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Thank you. We're looking forward to November 6.
Very welcome. Sorry, one question, if you guys don't mind?
Yes.
So what's next steps for me and who do I work with? Is this, do I wait for a formal approval or email? Or, and then also the second part is who do I work with closely on this, within the city?
Karen, this is Larry Bellamy. And we will take that formal action and approve your public property use permit. So we'll take that action. But you don't need to wait to get started. I just wanted you to have a chance to bring this before the council and before the Chamber so that we can offer to know that it's coming and we can tell our friends and family that this will be a great event to attend. So as far as the person with whom you should speak, you'll do most of your coordinating with the Chamber, I would imagine, with regard to advertising, help and getting the word out, help. We can be of service. And your main contact would be Shelley Endo Beane. But she won't be in next week, so you'll have to contact Sandy in our office.
Okay, and then Shelley and who was the second one, sorry?
Sandy.
And then as far as use of the road closed down and some of those curators, is there someone within the city that will help coordinate? Can I put my folks in touch with? Or what's the best coordination?
Shelley or Sandy can help with that. Doug Frantam, our public work supervisor, will assist as well.
Okay. What else can I do to help all of you? I've contacted the school about the food drive and also maybe having the band come and play and offer any booster activities that they want to participate in, you know, not only that morning, but also at the school. Is there some other way I can help the community or anything that I didn't think of?
Well, if it's all right, I'd like to just have you connect with the Chamber. They really have those tools available. They can make those, help you make those contacts and be a local, be a local contact as well.
Yeah, where does that...
Perfect. And just, you know, I have worked with Mary Hill in the county as far as all the road permits, which are all approved. So all of the using of the roads for racing, all of that part is done. This is actually kind of the last thing I had on my list that I wanted to make sure that we can make happen.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to working with you, Kathy. We'll be working with you as well. We'll, we'll get it done, whatever you need.
Okay, and ditto. So just give me a call and we'll come up with a plan and whatever I can do to help. And then when we get posters and spectator guides and things like that, I'll bring those by.
All right, I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Okay, perfect. And thank you for having me on. And thank you for partnering with the Oregon Trail Rally on this. I think it's going to be a really, really great thing.
Thank you. We're looking forward to it. The next presentation is from KVH, Leslie Ebert. Is she on the line?
Leslie, are you on there?
I am, Katie.
Yep.
Yeah, so we just, risking your request to kind of give an update to the council on how things are going with COVID and the vaccine mandate. So you continue to provide COVID testing through, we're checking Monday through Saturday. And I've been quite busy. Some weeks where it's whipped out a little bit. And then you, you know, you can express that were a positive. Get updates and reviews for everyone in the county. We're offering Pfizer booster shots and flu shots. So by appointment, flu shots and boosters from 5:00 to 7:00 will be due Friday and then booster shots throughout the day. Call the COVID hotline, it's 734029. And they can help you schedule whatever you need. COVID tests, booster shots, flu shots. You can get booster and flu shot and say, "I'm appointment." And those are from 5:00 to 7:00. Our kind of update on the hospital side. And there were a lot of hospitalizations in the state in the last month. And that made transferring patients out very difficult. And so we did have to hang on to patients longer than we would normally that we would, you know, transfer to higher level of care. We seem to be getting and seem to be improving the capacity throughout the state is starting to improve a little bit so that we can get patients out a little bit more quickly. But we're often having to transfer further than we normally would. Where we transferred to Portland or Yakima or the tri cities. We've had to go to Seattle and just some other places that aren't our normal transfer pattern to find those, those fairly appropriate, whatever the illness is that we're trying to transfer for. But that does seem to be improving, so we're very, very thankful for that. We are experiencing staffing shortages, just like all of our healthcare organizations. Part of the challenge is when we do admit patients, sometimes we're not able to get them if they are not safe, discharged at home, finding appropriate placement in a non-comcussion facility has been really challenging. So we have had to hang on to patients longer on the hospital side when we do admit them. So we've kind of been squeezed from both ends, not being able to transfer patients out, having to hang on. And then with the nursing shortage, we really don't only have the capacity for patients to keep the patients. And then when we're not able to keep them on up in the hospital, we've had to keep them in the emergency department. So that's just kind of where we are. Probably familiar story, which we've been hearing in news throughout our state. As far as the vaccine mandate goes, we're, you know, one week old age from that going into effect for hospitals. And we're about 95% of our employees who have either been fully vaccinated who have been up to an exemption. So we're keeping the last, we have over 300 employees. So we're working through the last kind of 20 employees whether they're, we have length or extension or if they have a vaccination record that they can provide. So it's been quite a bit of work to... We've made tremendous progress. And we're hoping to get through the last few of these in the next week. So that's kind of...
Whoops. What happened?
Are you still there, Leslie?
Yeah, I'm here.
Good.
We couldn't hear the last thing you said.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
We couldn't hear the last thing you said.
You didn't hear the last thing I said?
Right.
About, about we're working through the mandate?
No, when you said that's about it and you were still talking.
Oh, I said that's about it. And then do you have any questions? I was hoping to ask for the information that you want. I wasn't quite sure.
Thank you.
Mayor, this is Phil. I have a couple of questions for Leslie.
Okay, go ahead, Phil.
Leslie, first I want to say thanks to all your hospital staff. I know last year, everybody was praised. And this year, everybody in healthcare is kind of being forgotten. But I want to say thank you guys for doing a great job for, as far as rural medicine goes. Guys are doing an excellent job. I have two questions. With having to keep patients longer because finding long-term facilities is difficult. The kind of up and down healthcare, higher care level. Hospitals are busy and then the long-term facilities where patients are released to are also busy. Have you guys had to go on emergency, emergency room divert for ambulances this year?
So we have not. Occasionally, if our CT machine goes down and needs to be repaired, you know, we'll call in and that service comes within 24 hours. But if the ambulance calls and says, you know, the condition of the patient needs a CT, sometimes we'll have to divert till that maintenance occurs. We purchased a new CT last, just like last year. So that happens once in a while. We have been closed to have to go on divert because of staffing. But thankfully, our nurses have stepped up and they filled the shifts and we've been able to, you know, continue to keep doors open. Many of our counterparts throughout the state, rural hospitals, have had to go on divert because they haven't had the staff to be able to care for patients. So thankfully, that hasn't happened to us yet.
Okay, and just so everybody's clear that's listening, like an ED divert would be, you guys are no longer able to take patients from an ambulance, right?
That is correct. And sometimes you'll hear MC or Hip River is on divert. So it can be for a particular thing. Sometimes MC is on divert for OB because they have no more OB capacity. Or, so different hospitals will go on divert for different types of, you know, medical emergencies. And that gets, it's diversion of patients to an alternative facility when you're not able to provide the care that they need.
Excellent, thank you. So, and I thank everybody for doing, I know it's been messy. And I know the other hospitals along the coast have been on divert several times. And so this is why I ask. And with the, with the hospital beds being filled with patients that are waiting for, to be transferred out to a specialty hospital, what kind of delays happen?
What kind of delays occur? So sometimes, I heard twice on call as well. Sometimes EMS doesn't. If we have to go to Seattle, they, we can't go that far out of the area to take an ambulance that far out of service because we only have three ambulances for the county. So sometimes we have to call either AMAR or Metro West or a different service to come in if that transfers further or that transfer happens by six wing because it's too far away for a helicopter. So that's one thing that we'll hold it up. Sometimes it's the type, the type of bed. And you know that the cardiac bed is needed. That may be for the replacement. So we just do the best that we can do to take care of patients in the emergency department and tell that transfer can occur. We have a certified registered nurse of necessity who does, who can take care of a ventilated patient. And then other staff, we always have our ED physician. And we have a hospital provider that option will go down to the emergency room and help as well. So we just have to throw out the resources that we have available and then do, you know, consult through either telestroke or, you know, whatever specialty that we're, we can reach out to. We do, we use surgeons that we have locally for advice. And they do the surgeries that they can, that they can just safely here if you're in Goldendale. But that's, that's kind of where, you know, we really just have to utilize all our resources.
And Leslie, one last question, I promise. But thank you for all your answers. It all seems like you guys are doing the best you can with what we're given. And yet you still seem to excel in all of it. The last question is, I know like you guys are doing testing for COVID. The ER does the rapid test because of the urgency they need to know right away. But, but normal testing has to be scheduled. And I've heard from people in the community that they have fortunately opted to go to the ER and pay that higher payment visit for an ER just because they didn't plan ahead. With that kind of nonsense, what can the community do to help you guys out during this busy time?
Oh, yeah, that's, I, first of all, I really appreciate all the positive comments. It's very encouraging that your staff is working really hard. We do have that occasionally happen. We try to get in as many people as we can each day. And it's now, they've been through those staff... through those staffing issues which were mentioned, you know, being able to staff and fluctuations and volume. So we have been, you know, making as many appointments as we can and definitely enough appointments in the COVID drive-up testing site. So we have a call center staffed to help with scheduling those calls. We have, you know, let people know about other testing sites. There's testing home kits that are available now. And so for a while, we had a shortage. There was a shortage that coming to us on the rapid test, so we had to send out more and had to wait for those turnarounds. So we do have the rapid test available again, rapid tests. We can do more of those, those quick tests. So that's, you know, that is what I follow the guidance from the school. I know that that's been challenging for folks to have to get tested to stay in school, but there are home kits available. If you have had a close contact and you don't have any symptoms, but you're just curious, that's really not a good use of that resource. A better use is for those folks who are symptomatic and really need to know. So that's what I would, that's what I would say is, you know, try to use the resources for their best use.
And aside from COVID, you guys have the quick clinic available, right? If someone's not necessarily needing an emergency room, maybe they can leave that bed open for someone else?
We have the scheduled COVID testing because you still have to have staff members go out and collect the sample. So that's why it does have to be scheduled or we would have current lines of other clinics and, you know, return to see patients as well. So that's, yeah, if you, if you can make an appointment, I would suggest that you make appointments or that home tests are now available that you can order online or you can go get it, you know, at some of the pharmacies in the area.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Any other questions?
Other questions for council or comment? I don't believe so. Leslie, we appreciate a very, very clear update. Thank you ever so much.
Well, thank you all for asking the questions. I'm glad that we provided some additional information.
We're glad we have KVH. Thank you. The next presentation is the EMS district and Tony Gilmore is on hand to talk about that. Thank you, Tony. Glad to see you.
Good to see everybody. Good evening, Mayor, Council and staff. I want to just give you a general update and be available for your questions. We have, we're still maintaining a reasonable operating plan and we have a built-in six-month cushion so that we can continue to operate. We only have the two management physicians, our chief of operations, Will Keizer, who you've met, and our finance administrator. Recently, we completed an audit and on the average, our operating expenses are $2.1 million and our revenue that we generate on calls is $1.4 million. So you can see that we cannot earn enough money just taking calls and that's the value of the tax system. Our bad debt, which I don't know anything about running a city, I understand that it's common in ambulance, it's common in medical and hospitals. The bad debt is tied up in process. It's delayed and a lot of it is limited by Medicaid. There's just a certain rate, they won't pay more. I don't, I know that our rates currently are not as high as most, so we're pretty lean and we're pretty efficient. Our current planning challenges include the governor's mandate, which you've heard and I'm sure has affected you as a city. That could bring us down in providing advanced life support care. We may have to run a basic life support instead of three advanced life support. The wages for vacancies, whether it's through attrition or sickness dips into that six-month cushion that we've built in, that overtime that we don't plan for it, but we have to and are currently accessing it. We have a new union contract that is being negotiated and I think that you all realize that it's probably going to go up, not down. It's a fact of life. The fuel costs are increasing and we would like to someday have a new station. While we currently have a good rotation of our capital improvements, the ambulances, the life packs, we still very blessed to be under the roof of the hospital systems. And our current management strategy is, while it's lean and conservative, we're not going to compete with the current land values or the building because a station has certain codes that is required. So that is one of our biggest challenges. You know, we're working with actively as we can on grants and communicating with the federal government, the state government, to see where we can get in. We have not forgot our fourth ambulance pledge. We currently are addressing that through a standby system where the staff completes their work schedule and turns around and signs up for standby. And it's very effective and it's very efficient, but it's not a fourth ambulance. And while we are invested in the future, right now we cannot turn the key on that fourth ambulance. My position representing the cities is coming due for renewal at the end of the year. I encourage you or anybody that you may know that's interested, if you find somebody that you would like to represent the cities, I'm not that possessive that I have to stay here. I'm happy to represent you. I'm more than willing, but it's your choice. I wouldn't be in your way. Are there other questions or clarifications that I can offer? Council? Questions or comments?
One comment I have. Tony, the city of Goldendale was working on improving our Goldendale Airport. And Leslie mentioned, you know, that fixed wings and that's what the airport committee has thought, you know, we'll improve this airport enough that where we can bring in a fixed wing. Do you think that, in other words, are they going to have bigger fixed wings someday, perhaps, bringing, potentially bringing in? Or just what's your comment?
Well, I believe that the air service is important to all of us, the hospitals, the community and the ambulance. We currently have negotiated a contract with Lifelike so that when Lifelike can't fly, we can take them onboard our ambulance and we provide a driver and they provide the staff and we get that same level of care back out to the community as high as quality as we can.
Right.
So that's an example of not being able to do it all by ourselves anymore. We have to work together and we try to build a unified system to benefit the community.
Well, it's about, you know, sometimes you may have to take a patient to Seattle
Yes.
and a helicopter is not going to be able to do that job. And maybe, I'm not too sure, but even a small fixed wing would do the job.
Yes.
So someday they're going to have to have some bigger planes and that's why we're trying to make improvements to our airports.
Significant, yes. I agree.
Yeah, okay.
Because we can't afford to drive it. That's almost two shifts.
Right, yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, this is Phil. I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Along the same lines as I had asked KVH representative, what kind of, what kind of delays, what kind of difficulties have, has EMS seen in the last year or in recent months, you know, that you guys were trying to stay afloat in difficulty in staffing and/or difficulty in just the number of call increases?
There has been an increase in calls. I wouldn't say it's significant and I try and, I try and average it for annual rather than monthly. We have had two of our staff confirmed with COVID. It was not on the job. It was family related. And we currently, the staff comes to a 48-hour shift and they wear a mask for everything except eating and sleeping. They treat every patient as though it's COVID. They wear the surgery mask and when the patient's in the ambulance, we have a higher level of masks with filters and we've got a really good success rate. We believe that it's possible through the proper equipment that we can continue doing business safely. Your question had to do with the challenges. Our challenges are staffing. While this affects the nation and affects the state, we're already trying to be competitive to encourage people to come here and work for us and it's expensive. When you think about running the city, I offer, what would it look like if the staff was going to stay here for 48-hour shifts where they needed a place to sleep, a place to eat and a place to take a break? When you guys travel, some of you stay at motels, there's a wide variety of motels out there. Now think about the staff that you want treating your family. We're looking for a professional and we have to treat them as though they're professionals. So that's why the standards need to continually improve as we can afford to in building stations. So my answer to you, Phil, is that whether it's through attrition or not, of which our staff is all over the age of 50, so in the next 10 years, we're looking at an entirely new crew. Being competitive and what this COVID has done to the state and to the nation is going to affect how we continue to do business. We've been pretty lucky to have advanced life care, advanced life support care on three ambulances 24 hours a day. I can't guarantee that with the way this last two years has gone.
Okay. And then, you know, with the staffing issues and all that, how does the hospitals along the gorge being on divert make the situation not better, I guess? How, you know, how does that affect you guys as well? I know MCMC, which is, you know, Dausport Ambulance is the backup for Goldendale. And if they have a patient in Dausport that's going to MCMC, which is the closest hospital in there to divert, how does that affect the whole rotation around the county?
There's only so much we can do. There's been an increase in the last quarter for us to use Lifelike more from the scene than we have in the past. We generally have tried to get to the best reasonable level of care per state law for the patient at a hospital. And in some cases, recognizing early on and having a good diagnosis, we recognize that the level of care is really sometimes portaling. And so we, I know, have been flying more patients from the scene than before. And I don't know about the diverts and how it's affected the crews in their decision-making. I haven't heard any stories specifically to that, but I know it happens and we just move to the next facility.
Okay. All right. And I know, well, again, I want to say thanks to all the EMS crew for the work that they do. I know some days, working on 911, I know they don't stop. They hate to hear our voices on the radio in the middle of the night. That just means they're not going to get any speed. And I thank them for that because they are doing an excellent job. I know that they're doing a lot of work with the local fire departments, with the volunteers. Can you tell us a little bit about that? Because I know on the other side, when EMS is busy, fire departments have been, you know, having to pick up some because we only have the three ambulances. But KC EMS is also working with the fire departments to make sure that they're ready and they have what they need to be able to take care of.
Yes. We're strongly ingrained in trying to maintain the quality of training for all of the fire departments in the medical field. Unfortunately, they are limited in their taxation of what they're responsible for. So it's a real benefit to us and we want to keep it and we want to build on it. That's why you see our ambulances as they're retired. If they're structurally safe and sound, we like to get them back into service at a local fire district. Our most recent ambulance went to Clickatad. And so we continue to invest in that. I would like someday, when we have enough people, to be able to contract the fire departments in a pre-arranged agreement so that there's not a lot of surprises if we need more help. We can rely on their aid car or we can rely on their EMTs to pick up a coverage when somebody is sick or we run out of staffing. So I'm interested in building that relationship more than it is today. What was the other part? Did I answer a question?
Yeah, I think for the most part. I know that Goldendale Fire Department spent at least the last, well, this year in the last couple of weeks, they've had a number of calls where the ALS ambulance was not available. And I know that they also work closely with KC EMS and what you said, the training, the continued training so that it's the same across the board. So I think that pretty much covered it.
Yes, we're very proud of Goldendale. They transported recently, if I'm not mistaken.
I believe the last four calls that we've had, at least four medical calls have been where we have a delay in service and for whatever reason, it seems like they're coming from white salmon. So the last four medical calls and one being a transport to the hospital.
And we want to build that because we can't do it alone. Thank you for your questions, Phil. Is there no other questions in the report?
Anything else, council? Questions or comments?
Mayor, this is, I just wanted to say thank you to both Leslie and Tony for the information. I just wanted to bring that information to life so that everybody's aware of what's, what's going on in the background that even though we may not be aware, I think everybody thinks COVID, 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 but it's beyond that. There's so much work going on in the background that luckily a lot of people don't see it. They don't have to see the delay in an ambulance. They don't have to see the delay in the hospital taking you in if you're... They don't have to see the delay in the hospital taking you in if you're needing to go in, because there's a lot of people working really hard to make sure that that's not really visible to the public. But we should be aware of what's going on, and we should be thankful for everybody that's doing this work and keeping it up to the level that it is.
Thank you, Phil. I'll pass that along to the staff. I'm sure that we're not done yet. Thank you. Appreciate you being here. The next presentation will be from the Goldendale Chamber of Commerce, and I think Nicola Dean will be leading that presentation.
That'll be me, and I'll get help as needed. Remind us a second. Is this the right one? Well, before we start with the slideshow, I think this mask will maybe you can hear The Goldendale Chamber has, this last couple of years, you know, things, especially during 2020, the chamber was not open much of the time. And so we had a tremendous amount of work to do when we opened our doors in April of 2021. We came back, just opened a couple of days a week, and now we're open six days a week. And that's been wonderful. During the last few years, we've had a group of artists that present their work and display it in the Chamber office. And that group has grown, and they have, now we have about 50 artists that display their work. It's half office, half gallery. And Kathy has been in charge, Kathy Baldwin, who's my assistant at the Chamber, and also she's on the Board of Directors, and she directs art at the Chamber. So this has been useful for artists who oftentimes don't have the business end of it on their minds, and so the Chamber has been supportive of these artists. So when we opened our doors this year, we are funding from the city, it was not too late, but the funding from the county for us, we, I think we filled out our application for funding for the county in early February, and we were not funded until July. And that's, you know, that's par for the course after this last 18 months, two years. That's just how it goes. And we wanted to make a large impact with a small budget in a short amount of time. Usually, we are focused on events and increasing tourism, and we have done that this year to the extent we helped manage Community Day, and I feel like that was a success. But simply advertising this year was not going to do it. And we realized that the city of Goldendale has, the downtown merchants, the heart of Goldendale, has sometimes been, I don't want to use the word neglected, but it felt like that to our board. And so we wanted to do something that's a lot of impact, and thus, Art at the Heart of Goldendale was born. We have a board member who's not here tonight, who was instrumental in helping us form this vision and a little bit more of a long-term vision for creating, is what he called, an island of excellence within the downtown area that will attract people and help them to become proud of, A, where they live, or where they're moving, or where they're visiting. So with that, I'll just show you the rest. We have begun with Phase One. That's, I think I missed that. I think I missed, oh, I'm going to go real fast through the whole thing and start over, because I think I didn't get my, oh, it's not on there. Gosh darn, that's the way I saw it. Oh, but I don't, okay, we'll just do it again. Maybe I'm not thinking. So we did a lot of research on public art, on how it affects the economies of cities and mainly cities. We talked to the city of Tacoma. They have a huge public art program that is actually run by the city of Tacoma, and they have a separate arts commission. And we also talked with the city of Ferndale, Washington, who also has a public art commission. And they're very happy with what has happened because of it. There are a number of studies that have been done that talk about how a community or a city can change because of public art. So this National League of Cities quote is, "When city governments invest in arts and culture initiatives, city economies grow, but so do strong, vibrant communities." Certainly, we have had a lot of feedback since this first phase of Art at the Heart of Goldendale has begun, the scaffolding set up on the sidewalk, and people stopping Kathy when she's out with Felicia and Scott Gray, painting the wall of the second round. Round two? Round two. And so this is a quote, the one in orange, just from somebody either on social media, I think this was on social media that I just pulled off. We've had hundreds of people within the area talking to us about this project and how happy they are and how proud they are that this is happening here. And in many ways, because there's so much division, not in just our community, but throughout the country, this kind of an activity crosses that divide. So Phase One, Art at the Heart of Goldendale. So this is a quote from Phil Farmer, our board member, "Four Corners: An Island of Excellence to Revitalize and Viewify the City." The project started with a thought of how are we going to, how are we going to actually put this art up in a way that really made a difference? And we came to the conclusion that we needed to put it where there was the most traffic in the downtown area, and we wanted it to be on Four Corners, so that no matter where you look, you slide. So we started with Phase One, the first project, and Kathy has driven this. She has just driven this. So that's, the picture below is Felicia Gray, who most of you know, I'm sure, as a magnificent artist and designer. She is in charge of the mural. Laura Service owns Round Two, and she was glad, in fact, she was excited to have us do this, allowed the Chamber to put this art on her building. She gets nothing for this. It's, she gets nothing. It's just there, and she's agreed to keep it up there. There's no logos involved, no announcement that it's for her business, it is for the public consumption of art. And then Kathy, who's the director, she's Art at the Heart of Goldendale, and she's also a board member. And Sandra Choate, and some of you may know Sandra Choate, she has a shop in town called Monkey Shines. She's a fabulous mosaic artist, she's a ceramicist, she can paint, she's pretty amazing. And then, of course, up at the top, there's Scott working, and Felicia Scott, and Rick Lundin putting up the scaffolding, which was donated by Allen's Hardware for our use, and then Felicia doing the design. So right now, this is where it stands. This is just a piece of Sandra's mosaic, which is going to go around the door at Round Two. And then this is the center of the mural, and obviously, it's Mount Adams in the fall at sunset. The frame surrounding it will be, it's reminiscent of Clickatack County and Goldendale, wheat, deer, horses, cows, all the way around in a frame that is reminiscent of the Art Deco, Art Nouveau period, from which the exterior facade of the courthouse is designed. So it reflects the motif from the courthouse. Can I say something? Yes, ma'am. So the four corners are representing the four seasons. This is fall. We'll see more later. We'll see the others later.
Yeah, well, what I wanted to say, this represents fall, and so the motif that you're seeing, and the motif you don't see, represents images from the Clickatack County, Goldendale area, that represent fall. And so Sandra's mosaic also reflects those. So there, you can't really tell yet because the frame isn't on here, but the themes are brought together with the fall theme. So we have some concepts for the project completion, which would be Phase Two, Three, and Four. And the building owners, including the new Goldendale Pharmacy building and owner of the business, is excited about this. She wants to become involved with the Chamber and this project, Jekyll. Dr. Ogden, who owns his own building, would like us to work on that as one of the four corners, and Windermere Real Estate is very interested in doing this as well. So these are all, they're private buildings, but this is public art. No one's going to have to go inside to see that, nobody's going to have to pay a price, and that's really important. So these are some concepts. Definitely, we have a tremendous number of visitors to the observatory, and this is a representation of the observatory. Obviously, it's not, you know, it may not look like that at the observatory, but it would be painted, a mural on Goldendale Pharmacy, on the wall, Columbus side.
The one, if you've seen the one on Round Two, you know, it's in a frame, you saw the picture. This one will be the entire building, so there's no frame at all, so the entire 60 feet of the building. The mood is actually Troy's picture of the lunar eclipse from the observatory. That is Troy's picture of the observatory, and then it's, you know, an artistic concept of bringing the Milky Way into that, too.
And that's a local photographer as well, is it not?
No, that isn't.
Okay.
All the rest of it is.
All right. And then the courthouse representation, Dr. Ogden's has pillars. We're thinking that we would use this same motif on his building. And then on the Windermere building would be more of a river, using the experience Goldendale as a model for a hand-painted Goldendale that might be curved, it might not be flat, and a place for people to take pictures.
Yeah.
Which is, they do a lot in other places with murals.
Yeah, for that one, above Windermere is really long, like 18 inches by 35 feet or something. We're thinking about doing a tile river with salmon on that. And then on the other side of the building, you can't really see on this picture, but I do have something you can see later, old, you know, the old vintage postcards where it says, "Greetings from San Diego," that kind of thing down low, but of course, greetings from Goldendale, and then imagery inside the letters that represent Goldendale, and a place for people to stand in front of it so their picture can be taken and they can say, "Hi, I'm in Goldendale. Come and see this beautiful town." There are, there was a study done, a 14-night foundation study, and that was done in Chicago. Chicago, I don't know how many of you have been there, the public art is pretty remarkable. And they interviewed 40,000 people in 43 cities to get this information that I'm, I'll just read it to you because I love it. "The social offerings, openness, welcomeness, and the aesthetics of a place, its art, parks, and green spaces, ranked higher than education, safety, and the local economy as a driver of attachment to choosing a place to live and opening a business." And I know that most of us are logical, but this art and beauty inspire people, and it reaches, it's more universal. They can stop thinking about, for a moment, all the trouble. And we have a thesis that was written around that night study. If anybody's interested in any of this research that we did, you're welcome to copies. So we thought you might have some questions, so we thought we'd just be proactive and answer them. Why? Why do you want to do this? Because revitalization is contagious. We've seen that since we started this project. We have had inquiries, can we get involved, other businesses in town? And it's, and we're seeing it. We're seeing it on social media, we're seeing it on the street. People are happy and haven't had a lot, there hasn't been a ton to smile about for a while. So why now? The city's been hit hard over the last two years, and as we talked about, I think people were talking about, you know, whether or not the city was going to water the flowers or do the flowers again. And we watched, at the Chamber, we watched social media, we watched what's happening in our community and how people are reacting. And they were so afraid that the flowers were going to go away. And I'm so glad that you stepped up. So this is a small budget and a big impact. You know, we know that jobs and families are coming to the area. I mean, we can look at, you know, you can't, it was almost impossible for somebody to buy a house in our area this last summer. Housing starts, I haven't done the research yet, but I intend to look.
Impossible to buy it because there were none available.
There were none available.
Because they're selling like hotcakes.
Yes, they were selling like hotcakes. We know land sales are up. I'd have to get the, I would have to get the stats on home starts. I know the contractors are busy. And we have big projects coming, and families are going to come with those, those people who've come to work here. And we want them to want to be here. And I think we can capitalize on the upward trend to encourage new business growth and enhance livability. One of the REDS projects, the REDS breakout sessions, the Regional Economic Development Summit that was held on September 22nd, had a section on livability that I paid close attention to, and there was a lot there. And I think that this project lends itself to livability. As I said, low expenditure, high impact. $15,000 is what we budgeted for this first phase that's happening right now. We've had a lot of volunteers come and help, put up scaffolding, paint, assist the painters, assist the designers, and we are currently under budget. And when I think about the REDS projects that are on the list for the Goldendale area, they are critical. They're just They're just critical. But they're not as dramatic visually. And it's sort of like, those are the things that are really going to help people have better lives here. The projects in that REDS group and the projects that the city takes on all the time. And EMS and the hospital. But art at the heart of Goldendale, it's the, it's the dramatic sign of improvement. It's the icing on the cake that people see. And then they can smile and say, wow, it's all going to be okay. Everything's good here. So right now, we're working on agreements with the building and business owners and the Chamber. So that we have easements to have these pieces of art on these buildings for at least five years each that's automatically renewable unless there's some reason that they need to take them down after five years. But that gives us five years guaranteed. And so we're, we'll, we'll get copies of those agreements as they come to the city so that they know. We're also, we've made sure that our insurance covers our artists and the, and the activity that we're doing. And the last, the last bullet point here is ready, set, go. It's something we can do now. It's not something that we have to wait. Wait another year and then maybe we can do it. We just started. And so phase one is going to be completed in a couple of weeks, I expect. And we will be doing some public relations and some marketing around this. There are a lot of cities in Washington State who do this. And we have so much to offer here. It is such a beautiful place and it is so unique with an interesting culture that we need to show people what we've got. And that we think that it will improve economic, the economics of Goldendale and lend itself to economic development in the long run. And if you have any other questions, I'm just grateful for you having us here for this presentation.
Counsel, any questions or comments for Chamber members?
So is each of these phases going to cost $15,000? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we, what we've, that's what our budget was for this one, because we'd never done it before. It's not going to cost that much. We don't know yet. We have to get an estimate. And we're also looking for corporate donations for next year. We have, now we have a little time. We look for grants. You know, the grants that I saw for this, it would have taken a long time. We wouldn't have gotten, been able to get started. So we're, you know, there are some, some corporations that are coming to the area and they want to be part of the Chamber and we would like their money. And we're going to ask. And, and they've made it, you know, at least one that I've spoken with has made it clear that they'd be happy to support this kind of activity. So we don't want it, you know, we don't want to, to say, oh, we're going to come to the city and we want you to pay the whole thing. But we do think this is a, an improvement to the city of Goldendale and that it is for the entire community. It is not just for, you know, one person. So that's a good question, Darlene.
Darlene, this year also was an excessive of money. You know, I mean, we had a lot more money to use this year without having to do all of the, the normal things that we would do as a Chamber. Sorry, that light's, sorry, Nancy.
Can you shut that off? I can.
Right, don't you?
So, you know, everybody is always constantly throughout the years, you know, revitalize Goldendale, beautify it, that, that kind of thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And to beautify Goldendale and to make sure that we do those kinds of things. So this was a real opportunity to at least do kind of a seed start kind of thing, to show something that could be done, that everybody does drive through there. That's the heart. You stop, you look, there's no benefit to the actual business owner because there's nothing that's logo, there's nothing that's in their stores. It was a way that you could go down and say, well, that's, that looks pretty darn good.
It's my chamber.
You know? And so it's kind of a start to show we can do these things where people would always get overwhelmed with, "Revitalize Goldendale! Go get something!" And then shut down every, you know, stuff that didn't move us.
But do you think the four paintings, you know, on the corners is going to revitalize downtown?
It's a start.
Because I'm telling you, downtown is terrible.
It, it's a start.
Well, I think that that's where you look at beautification. You know, you go anywhere, even if you go down like Portland, you know, you'll see the big murals that are done on, I'm downtown Portland all the time. And you'll see big murals which take away from some of the abandonment buildings or some of that kind of thing. It's a direction where your eye goes.
I mean, it's beautiful, but I think...
So this was, I knew that there would be concerns as far as, but this is a year that you can't, if you don't utilize the money that you have right now, you can't save it for next year. It's gone. So that's something that actually is an advantage to every single one of us in this room. Because we're all going to go drive by it and it's going to be better than that bare wall that sat there about this color, you know? So it, it will be a benefit for us. So I just wanted to make sure that be kind of new.
Thank you, Darlene. I'm glad you're here.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, you say it's off to a good start.
Pretty, yeah, pretty, very, very good.
Hi, this is Phil.
Yes, Phil?
Hi, Phil.
Hi, I just wanted to say, great job on actually just getting started. I think that's a huge first step, like you mentioned. Everybody, we know at Chamber, so talk about beautify Goldendale, but we're tied down with red tape and politics. And I think it just takes a group of good people to just get things started and doing it. And I, I think it's great that it just got started and it's getting done. And it definitely is gonna make it look better, like Darlene said. Downtown needs a lot of help, but we need people to actually do things. So you guys are doing awesome and I think this is a great project.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Anyone else? Questions or comments?
Yeah, I've got a comment.
Good. Do we have any comments?
Oh, I was just going to say, yeah, man, that looks so great already and how exciting. Just something to look forward to as, as we move along. Yeah, that's just exciting and I can't wait.
Thanks.
Well, the point I wanted to make, this really mumbles my voice. The point I wanted to make is that they brought this to my attention and wanted to use the tourism monies that the city had previously agreed to give them. And I was concerned because nowhere in the scope of work did it say, "Paint a mural." And so I was concerned about how we would be able to reimburse the Chamber for this work. And I'm mainly looking at the financial part of it. I think it's a beautiful mural and I want to do everything we can to try to, to make it happen. There are some, so I thought I should talk to the state auditor about whether or not the tourism monies, the tourism fund and the way that the funds are restricted on how they can be used was the proper place to pull the money from. And they said, no, it was not. But we have some other options. And the other option that I looked into was the COVID-19 ARPA monies. Maybe there's something that we could read into that that would allow us to do it this way. And they said, no, that was not either. But we do have a housing rehab fund. If you remember some time ago, we used to rehab houses and we did, we were able to get some money coming back from the payoff of those loans. And in our code, it talks about housing rehab funds and it says, "Returned funds, maybe used as gap closing, leveraging funds in economic development projects or in other economic development strategies approved by the city council." We felt that was the best avenue to be able to provide the reimbursement necessary to make this first one happen. And the reason why I say this first one, to make, help make the first one happen, was in Toppenish, that's how their mural program got started, was seed money from a local, well, it's actually from the Washington State Department of Commerce. Through some program that they had available to them. And that's how the Toppenish one got started. And I feel like we can utilize this language as well as what everybody else has said, as well as talk about things like benefit to the public, beautification, revitalization of a downtown area, not a private, not a benefit to a private business. And that's been done by Ferndale, the city of Ferndale. So that hasn't received any curiosity by the state auditors. The key is to document, document, document. The thing that's different about this, just so that everybody's clear, is that it's not going to come out of tourism funding, it's going to come out of economic development funding. So that's going to require a budget amendment, a budget amendment ordinance. And we will complete an ordinance and put in a lot of wherethes and put a lot of documentation in there. And if the council directs, so directs, then I can prepare this ordinance and we can have available to them $7,500. Now, I know you saw that it said $15,000. And that's important because half of that is going to be by the county and half by the city. So our total potential outlay is only $7,500. And they will bill us based on a reimbursable basis and we will refund them that money if that's what the council so desires. That's kind of how all this came to be. And I know that's a lot of detail and I got down in the thicket, but it was important that I let you know why this is coming up at this time. And what we're trying to do is spend our money wisely and in accordance with the codes in Washington and the RCWs.
Thank you very much.
Can I make a quick comment? And in addition, we understand that when we, that we have a limited amount of money available to us from the lodging tax dollars. And so we are not asking for additional funding. In other words, it, what we don't, what we ask for in economic development dollars, we will not ask for that same money again. We will not say, oh, and then we still have the same grant for lodging. It's, it's the, the city grant is $31,000 for the year 2021. That's what we're going to use, nothing more. And we're not asking.
That's clear. That's good.
Do we need to have that ordinance made before January 22?
Yes.
Okay.
I will try to get it by the first meeting in November.
Okay, okay, good.
If that's the way the council so directs us to move the ordinance.
We have nodding heads or friendly voices?
Yep, I'm in favor.
At the table, the heads are nodding. Phil?
Ellie, Phil?
And Ellie?
Yeah, Yami, yes.
Super. Okay? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We've got Marshall. That's good. I'm going to thank the Chamber of Commerce for an awful lot of things they do in a lot of different ways, but this is one of the most exciting and probably the most different activities for Goldendale in a long time. But that one mural is just a knockout. Very, very, very pretty, exciting to see.
Thank you.
Wish we could do all four this year, but I know that's not...
I know, we can't, not this year.
Well, there's weather.
Yeah, we got to.
Yes, but you got through this one just great. Thank you.
We have plans. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
We'll go now to department reports. We'll start with our chief of police, Goldendale Police Department.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been, most of you know I've been gone for a little while. Some vacation, came back for a week and then the following week I went to an FBI lead command leadership course to further middle management certification. Sergeant Smith and I attended that course. It was very good and continuing our education for the leadership section. When I came back up with vacation, the sergeant's briefed that things went smoothly with the department. There was no big hiccup or anything to have to worry about. So I was real happy with that. And there were no issues. So at this point in time, we're back to work and ready to go. And we're still working on some house bill issues to get in direction for officers and some clarification through legal advisors.
Sure. Thank you. Noah Hall?
Yeah, I don't have too much to report tonight, Mayor. I'm just going to let you guys know that we're at 100, 152 calls, somewhere right in there. So right in line with last year, which was right at 200 calls, so.
About the same.
Yeah, about the same.
That's a lot. Any other things you wanted to bring under the report?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Thanks, Noah. Thank you very much. Is Doug?
Doug's on here.
Doug for Public Works Department?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I just have a couple of things. Obviously, people are seeing that we've finally got paint and are getting around with some of the crosswalks and handicap spots and things of that nature over the next month this week. We'll be putting parks to bed here pretty quick, rolling sprinklers out, getting that all ready for winter. We'll be, the leaves are starting to fall off the trees, so we'll be sweeping, following on for the rest of the fall. And we're looking on getting the Beagle at Eton Park rebuilt and hopefully a lot longer lasting structure. And we got, we got some marches for the playground area that, at the park, we should have another shift of those in the next week or two. So we'll get, get those up, up to par here pretty quick and that's by the end of the night.
Thank you, Doug, very much. Thank you. Good progress. We'll go on now to council business. I haven't left out anybody, right?
No.
Council business, the first one will be the Simcoe Sewer Line Crossing Award and that, I think we presented by Dustin Conway.
Go ahead, Dustin.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Would have received multiple bids for the Simcoe Sewer Crossing Project, subexcavation. Provided us the low bid for that project, an amount of $48,380 plus sales tax, for a total of $52,000, $52,011.75. And I recommend that we award the contract summit excavation. They submitted their paperwork to be on the small works roster and they intend to get it done by the middle of November.
Thank you. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Larry?
No. I just had a question. What was the original bid on that, what we thought it was going to be?
Dustin, do you have the original engineer's, engineer's estimate?
I think the engineer's estimate was a little over $55,000.
Okay. Perfect.
Do we have a motion regarding this award?
It should be noted that developers, Stillwater Ministries has paid for half of it and the city paid for half of it.
And this improvement will help other development in areas as well.
Help other development and it'll help us with the constant bad flood sewer lines and quite bad. And so it adds a great benefit to the city.
Good. It's a very promising project. Do we have a...
Yeah, Mayor, I still move that we approve the bid, the sewer project.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ellie. It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to execute a notice on the award of Summit Excavation.
Summit Excavation, the award is to Summit Excavation for the 2021 Semco Drive Sewer Project in an amount not to exceed $52,011.73. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Everybody there, motion passed as you announced. Thank you. Good work, council. The next item is the Aspect Consulting Contract, and I believe Larry will be, is on hand to present that, and possibly Andy O'Connor might be on the line. No? Okay, Larry, it's all yours. Andy O'Connor came to me a while back and indicated that the levels in the wells at both of the Bassie Wellfield and the Coronation Station well were experiencing a little more drop than he thinks is, than we normally had in years past. And he was just saying, we're going to be fine this year. We need to think ahead proactively, maybe have these wells looked at and evaluated by Aspect Consulting, who's been our geotechnical consulting engineer for a number of years and knows our system very well. And he's very experienced in what he does. So he agreed to take a look at and evaluate and assess the three different well sites, and he would be able to come to Goldendale and take advantage of our weather before it gets too cold. And he can do that for us, have an amount not to exceed $14,000. He'll be doing a site visit and some assessment at the wells, and also assessment at some neighboring wells that might be affecting it as well. So we wanted to get this done and be proactive and find out some more information about which we can make decisions for the future. Thank you, Larry. Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council to Larry? If not, we need a motion to take action on this contract. I'll make that motion to take action on that contract. You have a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to execute a contract order with Aspect Consulting for well performances assessment work in an amount not to exceed $14,000. Are there any further questions or comments from the council? If not, say none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed by the same sign? Okay. Very good. Phil? Is Phil on the line?
Yeah.
We didn't hear anything. Put that as an act.
Well, his little square came on, but I didn't hear him.
Oh, okay. He's.
He said aye.
Good, okay. Thank you very much. You almost became an abstain. Thank you, Phil. Thanks, everybody. We'll go into the next item of business. That, that contract will be awarded, and it's been passed by the council, so that's perfect. The next item is the proposed preliminary budget. We had a budget committee meeting tonight, and Larry will bring us up to date and present the proposed preliminary budget. Larry, are you ready? I presented it, and I already took action, as I said I would, with the budget committee that we had earlier this evening. We talked a lot about the discretionary funding that was available to review, and we had a very good discussion about those. Those will be, those discussions and decisions will be included in the preliminary budget, which is due out in November. So we're moving ahead as we should. I will be, I will be preparing the budget message and the preliminary budget. This one was the proposed preliminary. The preliminary budget will be presented at the meeting in November, and we will move forward with that along with the budget calendar. So things are looking good. Good to hear. We're on time and following the process for budgets to be presented and approved. Thank you, Larry. That concludes council business. We will go on now to the report of officers and city administrators. We'll begin with Larry Bellamy, our city administrator.
I don't have anything more to add.
Okay.
I think we've added enough tonight.
Hard taskmaster here. Okay, we'll begin with the members of the city council, and we'll start with Andy O'Connor. Andy Hall, Andy O'Connor's somewhere else.
I don't have anyone on the line.
Okay. Mylan?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I know there's been a lot of concerns about the mandates that's coming on now, and tomorrow I'm going to, and maybe the following day, I'm going to make a number of phone calls up to, and that'd be a number of offices, and also talk to some lobbyists and some union people, just kind of get to what's happening, you know? Is this going to be resolved or what? I don't expect to find a whole lot of help, but I'll definitely look into it, try to talk to some top officials on this, because I know there's a lot of concern in this area about that.
Very much so. Dave Jones?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, you know, we talked earlier about getting on task at form of the committee for that time capsule project. Good time to bring that up, Larry?
It sure is.
Can I get, can I get appointed to that?
Well, I think what we need to do, Dave, is just see, indicates that you would like to have a special committee of the council.
And some members of the public.
That's right.
And the public.
And the Chamber of Commerce if they want in. Yep.
To work on the time capsule project.
Yeah.
Very good. And also include a commemorative, commemorative coin.
Yes.
That we had suggested as well. Very good. And this will be a special committee for the purpose of the time capsule and the celebration. Very good.
Great.
Do we have other council members that want to let us know what they want on?
I'd like to be on that. We can have three council members on it, right?
Yes, three is the maximum.
Okay.
Do you want to be on it, right?
Yes, I do.
Yep.
Well, we have what, we have two now?
Two.
Well, I don't, anybody?
Doesn't the events person, shouldn't she be on there?
Well, this is going to be a separate committee.
Yeah, it's a separate.
Temporary committee, temporary committee.
You can be on both.
You can be on both if you're.
Well, I, I could, unless somebody else wants to put it that way. If someone else, council member wants to be on it, well, you know, I guess.
I'll do it.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you, Ellie.
That solves that.
It's going to be Dave Jones, Andy Hall, and Ellie Casey. Very good. Appreciate it. And members of the public.
Right, we'll, we'll start getting organized and get a meeting planned pretty soon.
That's good progress.
Right, okay.
Very, very good.
Hey, the only other thing I wanted to bring up is, I don't know if everybody knows, but we have a citizen who lives here in Goldendale that ran the Boston Marathon today, Ginny Balcom. It was her eighth Boston Marathon she's ran, eight, eight in a row. She ran it in three hours and 29 minutes. Really good times. We have an elite runner here in town, and yeah, I think we should congratulate her on that. It's really exciting.
Thank you. It's exciting to have that, that person in the community, and such great achievements. It's great.
Yes.
Darlene?
Yes.
Do you have anything?
Um, yeah. So trunk or treat? I haven't heard that anybody's doing it this year, but I've had a lot of people asking.
I have two.
So I talked to Larry, and I'm going to apply for the public property use permit. And whoever wants to come down there and do it, I guess, it's just going to be a kind of a free for all.
Trunk or treat, or?
Yep. So, you know, let's try to do that, because that's, it's great for the kids. They're safe, and it's great, and.
And it's planned on Halloween, is that the plan?
Well, Halloween's what, Sunday?
Yes.
So I think Saturday would be great, on the Thursday.
I'd need that.
Yeah.
So Saturday, 30th of October, trunk or treat on Main Street in front of the hot rods.
Well, it's the whole.
The whole area, not just there.
No one spread them out. Not just there. No, thanks.
Great, great. And since the chamber, if they want to be involved, it's always.
Yes, if you, you know, I, I have your number now. I'll book it. Okay, bring it. All right. What?
That's all I want to say, was make sure there's a connection here between the committee and, well, you and the chamber.
Okay, perfect.
Absolutely. Ellie, do you have something for tonight?
No, I don't.
Filberto?
I have nothing else.
Okay, thank you both. Thank you. On the mayor's side, I probably wouldn't have said that much, but I really want to get out of this mask for a few minutes. The thing that seems to be building in, not only in this state or in this country, is just a lot of tension and stress and friction over different things that we have really no control over, particularly when mandates and things like that come out, and maybe the health department, the governor's office, there's not a whole lot we can do. Our intentions here in Goldendale will be to encourage people to, to have the vaccine or to mask up, but we're not enforcing that, where we're forcing anybody to do something is a very personal decision. But I hope more than anything for all of us, because this is becoming almost corrosive to people's personalities, just raising so much tension, is to try every way you can to overcome the frustration and the anger and frustration of all of this, and try to focus more on positive points, progress we've made in this whole city, with the COVID for one thing, and the efforts that have been made by our fire department, our police department, our health department, the city all the way around, trying every way possible to help our citizens. I think we need to realize we are in a very unique spot in history. Sadly, it's not the happiest spot, but at the same time, we need to be very, very conscious of all the achievements that have been made and all the help that's being given, and we know everyone in this room is contributing in a number of different ways that we get through this pandemic completely and get past these mandates without great further friction and further difficulties. And that's, now I'll put the mask back on. I'd really rather not. Okay, the next item is public comment. Do we have anyone on the line for public comment? Oh, yes. Mr. Hopter.
With the upcoming election and release, the confusion on my part of who all's running and who all is there and who all isn't there, and I would like to see the city, if they could, put something right on their webpage, on the front page, so it's not buried or hidden, in this going to be a short period of time. Each position that is open, who's in it now, who's on the ballot, and who has indicated who's running as a write-in.
Right.
Just so we can sort, people like me that haven't got it all figured out, we can sort out who bothers to show up for meetings and who bothers to let people know that they want to be on, so we can make an intelligent decision on trying to get people to actually come to meetings. Of all the councils I've been, well, the two councils I've been on, I'm kind of appalled that some of the councillors can't even show up to the meeting, so.
I agree.
You know, this is not that big a town. You know, I think all of them could even walk to the city hall if they had to, let alone drunk, so. That's something I'd ask.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Yes?
Can the gentleman identify himself? We didn't hear a name.
Oh, Larry Hopter.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roger.
I'm going to put my citizen hat on now, not my Goldendale hat.
Give your name and address.
Kathy Baldwin, 413 Douglas Fir. Mayor, what you said made me want to comment, and I want to tell you that what I have seen in regards to the public art is that it, it is helping to heal the divide that you're talking about. For instance, there's a woman on Facebook that has attacked me in the past, but today I got a comment from her saying, what you're doing is amazing, and thank you. And, and so I, I think that art heals the heart, and art can heal our community, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Positive, always accepted and wonderful, really is. Anyone else for public comment? If not, we'll go to the next item, I believe, which is the executive.
Did you ask?
Session.
Yeah, he asked anybody in the room. Nobody raised their hand.
Did you have some on here?
No.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the executive session, and we will be talking during that time about property lease rates and union negotiations with our police department. Through that, we'll need to clear the room of the council members and our city.